First item is roll call.
Alderman Baman.
President.
Alderman Coleman.
Here.
Alderman Hezley. Alderman Stratton.
Here.
Alderman Totten.
Here.
Alderman West.
Here.
And the court.
All right, uh, next time it'll be invocation by Wayne Geiger of First Baptist Church in Grand Valley, followed by pledge of Jesus from Alderman.
All together. All right, we thank you for your great work for us and thank you for this day. We thank you for the sunshine, we thank you for the rain, recognize you're all the seasons and the seasons of life that you're there, that you're God. We pray for those who have received too much water, we pray for just their peace, their comfort, we pray for families, we pray for neighbors to come together to help. Now, we thank you for this country, we thank you for the great agreement that we have, although we don't always agree, or we're thankful that we have the freedom to disagree. We thank you for those who stand in the gap for our freedom. We pray tonight for your wisdom and grace, we pray in thy name. Amen.
Amen. The United States of America, in the good republic on which stands one nation under God, in the ethical, with liberty and justice for all.
And next time is the approval of the agenda.
No changes, Mr. Mayor. No changes, no proclamation. Move on to citizens' participation. Uh, we ask that citizens who wish to address the board, please come forward to the podium and microphone and give your name and address for the record. Do you have anyone who wishes to address the board this evening?
All right, seeing none, let's move on to the consent agenda.
There, I move and accept the consent agenda.
I'm going to ask Alderman West to approve the consent agenda, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Baman. Any discussion?
Seeing none, all in fairness, say aye.
Aye.
Also same sign. Move on to previous business. We have an Outer Belt Entertainment LLC liquor license request.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, um, I will let, um, Teresa, uh, just quickly recap the ask on the application, but as you all will know, this is, uh, the liquor license application from Outer Belt, uh, they're here this evening. Originally, the board had had some discussion regarding the original recommendation. Brought back some, uh, further information at the last, uh, board meeting that we had, uh, based on a, a meeting that we had with the applicants, uh, and after Teresa just recaps the, the, the ask or the information on the application for the times and license they're requesting, I'm going to have Chief, uh, do you still, do you have a handout available for the board? I'm going to have you go over that real quick, uh, just ba- it would be essentially terms of any probationary license that was issued for, uh, the group.
So Outer Belt Entertainment LLC is looking to obtain a Class F retail on off intoxicating liquor license, a Class H restaurant bar on off premise intoxicating liquor, Class I restaurant bar Sunday on off premises, and a Class M convention trade area on off premises, which is the 3:00 AM license.
All right, um, Chief Beal. Make sure the applicant has a copy of it. So based off of this, uh, these, these are essentially the items that we talked about going through the, uh, process. You'll see attached to the back of it is a map that outlines, uh, improvements that they would be making to the property. Uh, really, what this came out of is if the board does issue the license, what are the defined, um, items for probation? You know, that's one of the questions that came up. How, how do we measure, uh, success, uh, versus not completing the probationary period, uh, in a, in a suitable fashion? So we just went back through the discussions that we had had, kind of captured the, the ideas that everybody had agreed to throughout the process, and, uh, decided to provide this, uh, to the board to recap those, you know, what those things were that were agreed to throughout the process, uh, for your consideration. Happy to entertain any questions that you might have. I know that we've had, um, quite a bit of discussion over this process, uh, originally with the recommendation that was made and then withdrawn. The recommendation has, after the, the meeting that we had with the applicants, the recommendation, uh, has, has been confirmed by Chief Beal, uh, to allow them to come back to the board to seek the license. I know that I've screened a handful of, of questions from the board. Uh, Jim, I know that, that you've been part of the discussions, kind of ongoing, on and off, uh, through this process, so if there's any questions that, that any of you have, um, this is the, the time to answer them. Uh, if not, we need a motion and a vote this evening as to which direction the board's going to go.
Do you want to have any questions? Um, so tonight's action would be a yes or no vote on 3:00 AM license? The licenses that Teresa listed.
Yeah, the licenses that Teresa listed.
Yes, sir. We, we've talked about a lot of different options, you know, the times that we've met and discussed this item on multiple occasions, um, talked about a, I guess, a past precedent of a probationary period of time. As we've, we've inquired as to the folks that, that join us these last few meetings about what their interest would be in a 1:30. And understand that there's not a lot of interest here, or at least in, in past discussions there hasn't been. Whatever motion that gets made, I guess, needs to encompass all the, the varying viewpoints and opinions somehow to, to decide yes or no, to kind of word sense at this point. Anyone have any other questions?
Chief, um, the original, original, um, information that you provided us was, uh, pretty much of, you were recommending that we don't accept this. You have since had, um, additional meetings and information. Is it your position at this point in time, uh, that you would recommend moving forward?
Yes, it is.
And I know that we've had some information here provided to us, um, what, in, in a nutshell, what is the reason that you're, you've changed your position on that?
Well, one, we got additional information. Uh, it, and additional information that we received answered some of the questions that was out there. Uh, and I just think it, moving forward, with the, um, reasons they gave to, to the concerns that I had, that if this went to court, I, my belief is that a rational person hearing their, uh, answers to them allegations would believe that they wasn't sure that these were charges against them. And I think that's one of the biggest things that I had, uh, moving forward, uh, charge versus violation. And I think, and I think that's what really got us holed up. So it's reasonable to believe that they didn't know that these were actually charges.
Okay. So then my next statement of question is, one of our biggest concerns has been in the past that, that facility has taken a lot of our resources. And the concerns are, on my behalf, does, is there enough information here to, to provide you, because you're, you're the chief now, um, the confidence that you wouldn't have to use those resources moving forward?
I think one of, moving forward, I think one of the things, um, we, we actually got off to a good start when we met prior to this council meeting, and I thought that was a stab in the rear. I think that's what we're going to have to do moving on. And if you look on this list of things that we agreed to, that was to meet quarterly. So if there's any underlying issues, um, that I have as chief, they agreed to cooperate full, fully with the police department, their investigations, their inspections, and I think we have to hold them accountable if they don't. Everything on this sheet here that they agreed to, I think we need to hold them accountable if, if they don't produce, and that's what our aim to do.
So a couple of questions on that, if I may.
Yeah. Mr. Cook, do you have a copy of this plan agreement thing? I guess my, my question is to you from a legal standpoint, you know, they've made these plan agreements with chief. How, what legs do we have to stand on regarding this? I mean, because this doesn't, I mean, this, this isn't part of Jim, yea or nay, receiving the license. I mean, we've, we've not said nay, but we ran into other places before where they say they're going to do one thing and then something may not get done. I mean, is there any kind of recourse we have if something on this document doesn't get done, or get done to the satisfactory thought it was going to be? Because you can't really just say, oh, we're going to, you know, we're going to revocation if you're a liquor license because you did install the, you know, license that you were going to install. I mean, that's really not a reason for revocation, is it?
You, you were asking, or going to ask Mike the same question, maybe a little bit different.
Yeah. And al- and also, as an example, when Whiskey Tango originally came to us, you know, we were sold with this idea of this professional security staff that was going to be, you know, ex-police officers, ex, you know, military, things like this, and I don't think that really ever came to fruition down there.
Well, does this become an addendum to the license? And, and are the, the agreements that are defined here, are they in place before we're open for business on day one? Or is this a three-year or a five-year plan? How, how is this defined in the context of how the plan and the elements of the plan are actually implemented and, and under what timeframe?
Well, my initial response, uh, having just seen this for the first time, is a lot of bullet points kind of go without question or go without comment because they're expected. A lot of, a lot of training, uh, cooperate with the police department, I mean, that, that's kind of a, a non-starter. I, everyone is expected to cooperate with the police department. Um, the first place I would start is put some timeframes, dates on this. There's no, um, there's no, for example, add oversight and add a security, that's all backlog. Some of these things that they're going to do, there has to be a timeframe, there has to be a limit. Do it by, you know, thirty days, or whatever you decide is reasonable. But if you don't do that, there's no way for the chief to come back and say you didn't do it, because you don't have a reasonable period of time to complete what they said they're going to do. Uh, that's a start. And I think if you grant the license, you can, given the background we have with the current or the prior operator, um, I think you can attach these and make it a condition of the license. In other words, it can be a, you know, the code provides for probationary period, typically we don't do that. But Whiskey Tango has not been a typical business because of the problems that have gone with it, that Alderman Coleman touched. And those are issues that directly impact how it's going to operate moving forward, police department personnel, the time down there. And all of these, I'm guessing, most of these were generated, Whiskey Tango improvement plan, were generated because of concerns expressed by the chief or the police department, probably the Alderman, probably the buyers, because they, they've seen how the place has been run. Uh, they certainly are aware of the police involvement, they're aware of the problems I have in municipal court with bar fights on every dock and virgin. So most of these look like to me someone sat down and said, all right, we gotta, we have to change our, our business plan here and clean up that area. So I'm comfortable with this ki- this kind of a document, but it has to have some teeth in it. It's pretty loosey-goosey right now. You don't have any way of saying, hey, guys, you said you're going to do this, you didn't say when. And I have no idea if it's even comprehensive enough, so.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Counsel, Board Hallman. My name's Curtis Holland, I'm a lawyer with Paulson &amp; Ollie Firm, I'm the one who drafted that letter and sent it to you Friday, which really was a recap of like what we had talked about with the chief and, uh, give you some more facts. So just having been presented this, these are things we've talked about already with the chief.
Yes.
And by and large are agreeable, we're agreeable to them. Our, our goal is to try to get in there and clean up, improve, upgrade the place and have, uh, not have the issues that you had with, uh, with what's gone on out there. You know, we understand that there is a six month, six month probationary term, um, it's possible that, you know, if we, if we don't perform, we, we recognize that our 3:00 AM license might become a jeopardy in that, in that regard. I mean, the 3:00 AM license is very important to our business model, so we'd like to keep that moving forward if we can. Um, as far as a time period to do all these things, there are certain things we can, we can work towards pretty quickly, pretty immediately. Um, some of those might take the city's cooperation with us, for example, the fencing and lighting and so, so forth. But I, I think, uh, our goal is to get in and start these things immediately and proceed with due diligence to get these improvements done, and to upgrade the facility and to do these, these, these things that are listed in the, in the sheet here. And, and talking to, to my client, I think, you know, it, it's hard day one to have all that in place, but I think within thirty, sixty, sixty days or so, assuming that we have, uh, you know, we get to our plans for the fencing and the lighting and there's some cooperation, and we get a contractor to get out there and install it, you know, it, maybe it's three months, I don't know, but it's within a short, short period of time that we address these issues. Um, you know, so, I mean, I guess that's all I can say. There was some, there was some-
I mean, would you be, would any handful then was saying ninety days from the, I don't know, I really closely, but I guess whenever-
Right.
-their opening under their license would be ninety days from that point?
Well, and if, if I may, Mr. Mayor, um, this actually came up in our department head meeting this afternoon, this was, uh, as we were kind of discussing the, the process that we're going to go through tonight and this conversation, uh, we wanted to make sure that we had kind of those measurables and, and therefore the probationary period. And so it was not our recommendation that these be completed before, uh, the opening. It, it was if we were going to take a look at a six-month period, what are some, some measurable, definable goals? I mean, some of them aren't measurable, cooperation with the police department, you either do or you don't, you know, there's no halfway. But with the lights or the cameras, tho- those sort of things, those were all, uh, items that we anticipated seeing some movement, movement forward towards diff- during the probationary period. That way when the chief had quarterly meetings with the, the applicant, uh, we could say, hey, you guys haven't even submitted an application for a permit for the, the fence, or you haven't started any electrical drawings or schematics for the, the parking lot lights out here. So we didn't want to put the list together, um, to, you know, uh, back them into the corner to the degree that they have to have this done by day one, we were looking at it more of a, uh, during the, the entire probationary period. So I just wanted to let you know how that came about.
Thanks. And it is a practical matter, we can't begin to do these things unless and until we buy and acquire the business, and certainly not going to be doing that if we can't get the license approved and issued. So, so look, it's a step by step process, and I think there has to be some good faith effort on both our parts that we're going to move forward towards these things. Ultimately, all power rests with you, you're the decision maker, so, um, you know, we want to work with you to get these things, uh, done and moved through in a timely basis and work with the chief. I mean, quarterly, we were talking monthly, if, if, if we need to, if we need to meet more often than quarterly, we're going to do that as needed, really is how that should work, but.
Can I have a suggestion? Uh, challenge two and three to me, with the weather coming up that we have, number one's going to be hard to get it all done, but at two and three, I figure it could be done, I mean, within a reasonable time. Weather's not going to provide, I mean, cause any problems. But I'm concerned about all of this other building and stuff during the winter, like this morning.
Well, Jim, correct me if I'm wrong.
They have the six-month probationary period, but then also licenses renew July 1st.
Yes.
So really, in theory, July 1st rolls around, we haven't seen movement on these items that is satisfactory for us, we just don't renew the license come July 1st. I mean, how, does this hold water to that to give us the right to do that?
I don't like that, because I don't want to wait and then have the applicant come in and say, well, we didn't do it, you didn't do anything about it. So you tacitly approved it, uh, not to hurt or whatever, do that, but, uh, that would be a good lawyer who would say, you sat back sitting, didn't do anything, so there's really no harm, no foul, we'll get it done. Purpose behind this is to put some times on here, thirty, sixty is reasonable, some of these are immediate, uh, like Alderman Totten said. You can do a lot of these things, immediately upon opening, remove the cockpit, oversized cockpit. You know how long it's going to take to get the training done? That's easy. Uh, some of them are going to have to, you know, like the fencing and the lighting, maybe that's thirty, sixty, I don't know. But we gotta have some teeth in it. I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to go anywhere past six months, and I would put some immediacy in, in most of them. If they don't get it done in six months, then it's on them. They, they have plenty of advanced knowledge that we're requiring these things to be done.
So really, if we just say that all these items would be completed and finished in six months?
I think that's, that's the purpose of the probationary period. I would hope you would stress to the applicant, we'd like to see it done in thirty to sixty days.
Is that another question? Sorry, Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Put you on the spot a little bit with this. So, so we, so we built this into this agreement. And, you know, as, as I've had some amount of time to sit up here and listen to different things and reports and various statistics from, uh, Chief Beal's predecessor and different things like that, uh, review of, uh, court proceedings and cases that have been brought forward that were associated with the establishment as it sits today and, and different things like that. Let's say something horrible does happen, after, after these measures are adopted and after we as a entity have taken action on them, do we become culpable, culpable in those proceedings if, if we're the ones that are requiring this to happen and it still doesn't prevent some of the, the, some of the things that have happened down at that place over the years?
I suppose anybody can be sued for anything. I don't, I don't have as much concern about that, because you're doing the right thing, you're setting out the right restrictions, you're doing everything you can do as a, as a governmental body to do it. So you, you, you have a certain immunity anyway, but you also, you're not ignoring it. If you ignored it, turned your head, then maybe I'd have a little more concern. But it's still a governmental entity. I don't want to say no, never, but I, I, my comfort level is pretty high that by doing what you're thinking about doing, you're, you're protected. You certainly haven't been negligent in turning your head and letting it continue to operate in a manner that could cause harm or something.
I just wanted to remind you that, you know, the license, there's a license already on the property, it's good for a year. So we walk away, you're stuck with a year license there as it is. Um, this gives an opportunity for a fresh ownership to come in, upgrade the facility, hopefully prove to you that they're worthy of a new, of another chance, that's, that's what we're asking.
Do, do they think it would take them to get the fencing and the lighting?
Well, we talked about a, a kind of a three, three-month period where we would be able to come in and give a, submit a building plan, I mean, we have to get a building plan, a building permit for the fencing and so forth. You, you have a copy of this, right? Yes, sir. I mean, if, if, if you said six months, it would be done in six months.
Okay. Well, I mean, just, we were just kind of going through this, if someone makes a motion to approve it as, you know, part of that motion, if they said, you know, items under outside of business would be done within six months, uh, items under inside of business would be done within thirty days, uh, items under employees would be done within thirty days, and then owner's agreement, that'd be day one, I mean, would those be acceptable?
I, I, from what I could tell from the list, I think that's okay. The one, I wasn't, I wasn't familiar with this, uh, training by the state control, state alcohol control, what that was, I'm not sure what that is.
Yes.
Is that something that, I don't know how this will work or not.
Yeah, I'd just have to set up the training for them.
Would they like come out, do they go with it, or do we go, how does that work?
Yeah, they can, they could either come to you guys and perform the training, or you guys can go out to them.
Right. I don't see those as being problematic, but I, I'm not really busy.
Just, just a matter of me setting it up.
I mean, certainly those could be done relatively quickly, and not, not this whole six-month time, but I, I would, I would expect the fencing and the lighting, even though it is winter, I, I don't know the winters can be like this year. I mean, sometimes you can do that kind of stuff.
You couldn't have done it today.
No, today.
What, the, uh, meeting of quarterly versus monthly, from your viewpoint, is monthly too often for you?
Monthly is not too often, but I was just trying to set, set a standard based on this to give them time to actually implement some of the things that they were planning on doing.
Do you feel that you would rather do it quarterly or monthly?
Personally, I would rather do it quarterly. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Now, they do know there's a sweet little old lady that'll be down there checking on him, just like she did before.
Okay, I have a question. I don't know if it's for Mayor Todd or for, uh, Mr. Cook, but, um, do we have to approve a 1:30 with a six-month probation, or can it just be the 1:30 period?
This is just 3:30.
You mean?
Does that make sense what I'm asking? Like-
You're talking about just, just doing 1:30, not 3 o'clock?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, how's that, I mean, because they're requesting, I guess what she's asking, is they're requesting 3 o'clock. Can the board change that?
So any, now, this, it, it says any licensee, uh, I'm sorry, any license issued for the first time, uh, shall be, uh, on a probationary basis for six months, so-
What she's asking though is, I think, can the motion be made by this board to only authorize 1:30? Is that, I think that's what she's asking.
Oh, yeah, I mean, the board, the board can authorize, um, a Class F, a Class M, I mean, well- I mean, well, that's, ultimately, that's up to the board which license is going to be, uh, issued. I don't know, Jim, is there any issue with the board changing what they would allow versus what was requested through the application?
Well, I think the applications for 3 o'clock are an all-inclusive 3 o'clock license, and that's a license that your current applicant, or current owner has. I think you'd be, it'd be difficult to approve less than that now, because that's, that license is on the books. There's gotta be a, a reason for you to change it. You're gonna change the code, then change the code, but I don't think you can. I would be very uncomfortable not approving, if you're gonna approve any of them, any of them, approve all of them. That's my view of the legal point.
So, you're saying the motion is for either to approve it all or don't make the motion to approve any of it?
Correct. Absent the applicant saying, "I'll amend my application, I'll, I'll go 1:30," which I haven't heard happen yet.
Any additional questions? Okay, anyone wish to make the motion?
I'll make the motion for them to, uh, get their 3 o'clock license with what we have stated here if they, for the six-month probation, with all of the things that we've listed that they have to complete within the timeframe that we've mentioned.
Okay, so the six months for outside business, thirty days for the inside employees, and then day one for the last thing.
Question from Alderman Coleman, second, Alderman Totten. Any discussion?
Could we make sure for the record that we have some reference to the document that says outside, inside, employees, so that-
Teresa has it for the minute.
I get into an argument or later about-
Yeah, and I wrote on that copy.
Agree, I wanna be able to point to something. I would suggest we use this letter.
Yeah, she does. And I, and I wrote the times on there, but she can read it on the back of it.
I can get that. So, should I just clarify?
Yes.
Um, outside of business, one, two, and three, six months. Inside of business, one, two, and three, thirty days. Employees, one through seven, thirty days. Owner's agreement from beginning of operation.
And those, and those are like six months from day they open under their license?
The day the, date the license is issued.
Okay, the day the license is issued up there.
There's no timeframe for them to take the training through the police department, is there? I mean, it's-
I can get that set up.
Okay.
I can set that up.
Any additional questions or discussion? All affairs, please say aye.
Aye.
All post same sign.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, roll call.
Baman. West.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Totten.
Yes.
Strattan.
Three, two. Majority of the board. All right. Is that correct, Jim? We don't, we don't need-
We ran into this before.
Yeah.
Not an ordinance.
Three, two, so.
Okay, that's not an ordinance, majority.
Because ordinance, you have to have a majority to seat in the board, right? Okay.
Majority, majority controls, not an ordinance, not an ordinance.
See, no items under new business, presentations of public hearings, move on to ordinances.
Bill B-18-17, second reading, ordinance 2444. Ordinance furthering upon a class, Rosewood Hills, ninth plat, phase A. Second reading, ordinance 2444.
I move that we accept bill number, uh, B-18-17 for its second reading and make it into an ordinance. Two, four, 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 is that what you said?
Yes.
I have motion, Alderman Totten, to approve bill B-18-17 for its second read, making ordinance 2444. Drive a second.
Second.
Second, Alderman West. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, this is just the second read that will give the final approval to Rosewood Hills, ninth plat, phase A. This plat consists of thirty-two lots and two tracks. If you have any questions, Mr. Arroyo can answer those.
Any questions or discussion? See none. All affairs, please say aye.
Aye.
All post same sign.
Baman.
Yes.
Totten.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Strattan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Five, zero, Mayor. Resolution R-18-42 is a resolution by the Board of Alderman, City of Cary Valley authorizing the write-off of doubtful utility account balances. Resolution R-18-42.
Do we accept resolution R-18-42 as read?
I have motion from Alderman West to pre-resolution R-18-42. Drive a second.
Second.
Second, Alderman Coleman. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, these are utility billing accounts that were, that had balances from 2012 and 2013. It's just a matter of housekeeping. We go through and identify, uh, account balances that are doubtful, that we will be able to collect accordingly. We have $28,806.15 from water and $15,511 dollars from sewer. This resolution will, um, will approve the write-off of those uncollectible or bankrupt accounts. Do you have any additional questions? Mr. Bowden can answer them. Uh, there is, uh, the follow-up to the, the listing is in the pages behind the resolution.
Any questions or discussion?
How, how much are we talking about being written off? And it's just for the timeframe of 2012, 2013?
That's right.
Um, what makes them uncollectible?
Uh, bankruptcy, uh-
They've been, um, submitted to the collection agencies and they've been submitted to the collection barrels and they haven't been collected in at this point, you know. And you wanna bring your receivables down on your balance sheet to a, a true number?
Essentially, at this point, these are monies that were due, um, seven years ago, six, seven years ago, I'm sorry, five to six years ago. Uh, the longer that we hold those uncollectibles out there, the more it artificially inflates our receivables.
You know, a lot of them, especially if I'm wrong, but a lot of them were like people that probably moved and-
Definitely wandering, it's like-
They're, they're probably no longer in town. They probably moved out of town and didn't pay their wa- last water bill, and now it's like how you, how you track them down, you know?
Well, and it's been with collection, our collection agency for, you know, five to six years, uh, it's unlikely to be collected at this point.
Right.
Which is why we write it off.
Yeah, I don't think you know if we're still in town. I mean, they're not like enjoying water somewhere else on the next street, so.
All right, any other questions or discussion? All right, see none. All affairs, please say aye.
Aye.
All post same sign.
Five, zero, Mayor.
Next up, see your reports.
I have to report, your honor.
All right, next up, see your minister's staff report.
Uh, Mr. Arroyo.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the board, I just wanted to remind you guys that our household hazardous waste event is October 20th at 8:00 AM to noon, and it's over at the, um, Jackson County facility off of Old Forty Highway. So, uh, they will accept, uh, mostly it's paint and chemicals. They do not accept electronics, so just wanted to remind you guys of that. Thank you.
I have just a few things, Mr. Mayor, quickly. And this letter, our, this letter the city received from the National Jackson County Fire Protection District, uh, since July 7th, we authorized the, um, additional withholding and collection for fire districts on chapter 99, chapter 100, and chapter 353, tax incentive projects. And essentially, what this bill did, what this bill did was to allow the fire protection districts to participate in these type of projects or not, so they can annually assess an amount that they're going to participate in our economic development, uh, projects. Chapter 99 is the statute that, um, essentially authorizes TIP, it's Land Clearance for Redevelopment Authority. Chapter 100, uh, is industrial development bonds, and chapter 355, 353 is urban redevelopment corporation projects, uh, where blight is used. So, as you can see, this letter is from Chief Grote of CJC stating that they have set their, their increases that will be effective on August 29th of, of this year, so, uh, went into effect several, well, about a month ago. Uh, they will be participating in chapter 99, 100, and 353 projects to, uh, the tune of about 25 percent. So, uh, if there was a, a chapter 100 project, let's say that, uh, previous to this, this bill that was passed in July and signed by the governor, uh, the school district, CJC, um, all the taxing authorities participated at zero percent, so they were able to withhold zero percent, uh, according to the, the bill, and it's still, this, this bill's still running through some, uh, legal opinions, uh, but according to the bill, they have set these, these amounts to withhold 75 percent of any economic development project that would come new to the city or any project that we would amend from this date forward. So, uh, I'll have more information as, uh, any legal opinions arise on that front. Uh, just wanted to confirm that we're having a budget workshop on October 29th at 6:00 PM. It will be at the community center in the Wynona Burgess Room. And then the last piece of business that I had is, uh, related to the reschedule of the November board meeting. Uh, it was originally set on November 12th, but we will be closed for observation of Veterans Day. So, we sent out the poll. Everybody, uh, we were able to get, on one evening, we were able to get five of the six, uh, participants in. And I'm sorry, why is there not seven? I'm just looking at this. Jeff, did you decide to this?
Nope, apparently not.
Are you, well, as of right now, we, we can't, the only night we could even get a quorum is November 13th, which is Tuesday. Chris, that evening, you weren't a, able to attend, but of the rest of the meetings, we were, we weren't able to get a, the quorum. So, uh, are you available Tuesday, the 13th?
Yes.
Okay. If, uh, that's suitable for the rest of the board, then we will just go ahead and move that meeting from the 12th to the 13th. Normal time, yes.
It works for everybody?
Maybe, maybe not. You may have to fight my wife.
All right.
You may have to fight mine.
What?
I didn't get to respond, you may have to fight with mine.
No, maybe, maybe we're hitting the house, I don't know.
Uh, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Next up, Board of Alderman reports the comments. Alderman Strattan.
Nothing to report.
Alderman Totten.
Well, I'm gonna brag again, 'cause I'm so proud of all the people in Front Street and the racetrack. They have allotted me with ten, $492. A donation was given to make it 500. And then when I'm bragging and thanking everybody at the racetrack, a lady gave me another hundred dollars. I am proud to say he's already given out 300 dollars and we're getting ready to go around again for another 300, but I wanna say thank you and, you know, there's people out there that like to live for the police department. Hey, it doesn't take you five minutes and look what people can do. We need to get together and working for the community, and if we're taking your trash and making money with it, come on, we can do it. Ask Shannon, he helped me with Ronald McDonald's house, and he almost died when I got in 28 large yellow fat letters containing some hot cuts. Now, we can do it. Let's get it together. And I'm also sorry if I upset the power light company, but that's okay. We got it done.
Alderman Coleman.
Nothing to report, Mayor.
All right, Alderman West.
Nothing to report.
Alderman Baman.
Nothing to report.
Next up, some mayor's report. Uh, nothing to report this evening. Uh, execution session, we saw we did have one for personnel.
Yes.
Okay, so we will have an execution session for personnel. I will entertain a motion to adjourn the execution session. Rest of the moment, Coleman. Mr. Coleman, second, bye.
Second.
Totten. Any discussion? See none. All affairs, please say aye.
Aye.
All post same sign. Alderman Strattan.
Yes.
Alderman Totten.
Yep.
Alderman Coleman.
Yes.
Alderman West.
Yes.
Alderman Baman. All right, adjourn the execution session.